All the meeting to order. Right onto roll call. Chris Robinson.
Here.
Katie Avalos.
Here.
Mark Cromwell.
Here.
Danielle Bailey is present and I believe Carla is not joining us virtually. And Carla can cross his excuse, so I will be having her absence. To. Item one C. Pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, loyal nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the item one D. I move to approve today's agenda. Second. All in favor of approving the agenda? Any? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, the agenda is approved. And now we will move on to item one E, approval of June minutes. I'm, I'm to approve of minutes for June. A second. There is a motion to approve the June minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, voice vote, aye?
Aye.
Alright, the June minutes are approved. And now we can move on to the public comments section. So if anyone is here from the public who would like to speak on a non-agenda item at this time, to raise your hand or come forward. Come on forward and state your name and your address, please.
Wayne Martin, seventy-two, seventy-five, North Port Washington Road, apartment twelve twenty-one, Glendale, Wisconsin, five three two one seven. So, a few meetings back, there was the survey results that were presented and Board had expressed interest in putting those online for public to view the slideshow and as of at least three PM, they, today, they weren't up there in board docs. I'm not sure if you're putting them somewhere else, but.
Okay, well, we can look into that. I don't specifically recall if we have decided to put them up or not put them up.
There was no formal for doing this or not, but some had just expressed interest in doing it. I was just wanting to make sure it wasn't forgotten about.
Okay, I appreciate that. We'll look into that. Thank you. Anyone? Anyone online?
Nope. Nothing in the chat.
Okay. Then we can move on. Item three A. There's a health and nursing services report.
So, item three A, um, our school requires annual reporting of our health and nursing services in our school district. Um, this report that's included and is also part of board docs, um, covers the scope and health of nursing service that were provided during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, along with some of our district nurse, nurse houses recommendations for thinking of this group of services. Um, it is recommended that the board of this report, um, some of the key, key areas, and I just want to kind of state that is, um, you see some of the areas which Nurse has provides support to our students. Um, another area of our foundation is to continue to develop, um, and review all of our health plans for our students each year, um, and reviewing medic- medication. Also, she is seeking to try to work to partner with the UWM undergraduate nursing program, um, to implement some vision screening for our students in K four and K five. Um, recommendations to, um, get our new to district students to have documented health conditions as they're enrolled, so we can be proactive in our approach towards them. Um, monitoring our immunization compliance with the Department of Health Services, um, coordinating our CPR training per staff and working on a heart safe school designation project. Um, also continuing to train the crisis health response team at each school, with team members ready to intervene and help with any emergent medical need arise. Um, this would include CPR, AED training, and also first aid and opioid reversal agents. Um, also to work with a district and medical advisor, which at this point, um, I am aware that we have a district medical advisor and is part of our new policy, so a call out to our community and our families, if we have anyone in the profession who would want to serve in that capacity, to please reach out to us and search for somebody to be our medical advisor in this upcoming school year. Um, also to continue to work with our athletic coaches and train, um, our students as well as our athletic coaches and concussion protocols, as we know that that's a concern for athletes. So Nurse has continues to do really good work and provide that, and I guess I would ask the board if there are any questions. Let's get a motion.
I'm going to approve the report.
Second. I, there's a motion to approve the nurse, nursing services report. Um, discussion, any questions, Chris?
Um, first I want to say, I thought it was a great report, very thorough. Um, I, I do have one question, um, for us to maybe think about, um, with the number of, um, times that an EpiPen or Avi, I don't know how to say the other one, AVEQ, had to be used, I wonder, you know, if the, if the health staff has, i- if they think we need to take any additional precautions to lessen the risk of exposure to allergies.
That's a very good question.
And again, I don't, you know, expect an answer now.
Yeah, no, that's a very great question to follow up with. Thank you. Any other question? Oh, Kevin, do you want to add?
Well, just to comment, when I was in that position, um, there, sometimes within nut allergies, we actually had a kid who reacted to to the horse chestnuts or whatever's out on the playground, you know, you get the shells. So she had touched one of those, and that was the reason that we had to use EpiPen on her. Um, so it wasn't so much that was in the building, it was just, how do you test, stop a six-year-old from picking up something off the playground?
Yeah. Thank you. Karen?
Thank you. So along those lines, as a allergy parent, I guess my question would be, do the staff have general training in how to recognize signs of allergic reactions or anaphylactic reactions and asthmatic reactions so that they can be proactive? Because residues or unusual or unidentified allergens can exist in a variety of places, and our kids can't always articulate when they're having a problem. So maybe the staff in general could be benefited from paying for training and awareness? And then are hearing screenings conducted by our speech pathologists, or do we have hearing screens? I would. Kayla?
Um, if there is a concern, we do have an audiometer in the district still, and Kim does those, so if anybody has a concern, they bring it up to Kim. And then, you know, because it was stored in my office, so she'll come and grab it, so she'll do screens. Um, we haven't done across the board screenings since she's maybe in the twenties.
Okay.
Um, and part of it, I know she mentioned she wants to, um, work with, uh, um, the nursing students. It was a matter of trying to get somebody in to be able, um, to do it.
So I know one of the practices in our, in my district is that when a child is referred for, for instance, speech language, and I would actually argue that perhaps regardless of the reason for that, but we screen, we try to screen hearing and vision to make sure that there isn't a more obvious reason that the child has a, a lack of access. So just something to.
Karen, thank you. Um, okay, I did have sort of along those lines, well, it's, it's the student-specific trainings for those who have an IHP or medical records on file, I read that to mean that if a staff member has someone in their classroom who has an IHP or like, that that staff member would be trained to about, like, for example, an asthmatic or, that's what that means, okay? Um, the wondering that I had too was just kind of around concussion cardiac arrest protocol. I love that, uh, athletic coaches are, you know, are being trained on that. And just kind of wondering if that's a more general training, even for teachers or, you know, something you explore.
So we do have AED machines, and so there's some, some training on, you know, each school has a crisis response team that, that has some training on the AED machines. How can, in those areas, so we know where those are located and how to begin to put on strips and cover the, cover that need if it should arise.
Okay.
And during the school day, I think it's the coverage after school, that she was looking to shore up.
Okay, oh, yeah, that's, okay, yeah, right, that makes sense, okay. And then, I feel like we talked about this during COVID, so forgive me if I'm not remembering, but do we monitor, like, staff vaccination levels? Do we have any requirements around staff vaccination?
Not as a contingency.
Okay, no, sure, okay. Okay.
Any other discussion?
Okay, so there is a motion to approve the health and nursing services report, twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four. All in favor, voice vote?
Aye.
Alright, report is approved. Now we're going to move on to the seclusion and restraint report, item three B. You want to say?
Uh, yes, the Glendale River Hills School District policy requires annual reporting of seclusion and restraint of students as defined by the Wisconsin DPI. Uh, this report encompasses the grade level of impacted students, the number of restraint incidences, and the number of seclusion incidences. Um, this is a standard reporting, so in those situations that arise in which restraint of students would need to be made or seclusion of students would need to be made, um, in terms of safety, um, those restraints are made and we follow a reporting process. Um, in addition to that, all of our, um, social education staff, our professional staff, um, administrators, um, supervisory aides, and oftentimes some of our highlight arts teachers, um, and those who are on those crisis response teams are trained in crisis prevention intervention training, so they have equipped skills and are trained appropriately to respond to crisis situations in which students are disreg- dysregulated. Um, in grade six, we had one instance of restraint. In grade three, there were two instances of restraint, and in grade one, one instance of restraint. Um, there were no instances of seclusion, um, you know, um, some schools may have certain spaces that are designated for students that is not something that would be housed in either way or not else, as a practice.
Okay, so is there a uh, a motion to approve the seclusion and restraint report? Second. Okay, any discussion? Is there anything from the audience? And you, all in favor of approving the seclusion and restraint report? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the report is approved. Moving on to item three C. Curriculum academic standards. Should I carry that up?
Sure, I can. Um, so this we do every year, so it.
Just make sure my microphone.
Oh.
Is anyone else? Oh, okay.
Um, so every year we have to pass the math, ELA, social studies, and science standards. Um, the standards have not changed since twenty twenty-three, so this would be repeating the current standards we have. These are all the standards that are also on the board exam and our state testing. So we, I would like the board to move forward with, um, kind of renewing our math, science, social studies, and ELA standards. Um, again, those are the Wisconsin DPI state standards.
We accept the, the standards as proposed.
Second. Alright, there's a motion to approve the academic standards for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. As proposed. Any other discussion, any questions from the audience? Alright, uh, all in favor, voice vote, aye? Aye, any opposed? These standards are approved. Alright, then we're moving on to item three D. Special education update.
I'll go up here.
Um, we wanted for me, I might have let's turn that off.
We wanted to, um, provide a special education update, and really a summary of, um, of the work that's been done in special education, or the work that was done during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Your leadership team felt that it was really important to just give you some context about some of the work that's done related to um, serving some of our students with the most unique needs in the school district. Um, so what you have in front of you are just some overall trends in special education. And I tried to provide a visual for you, but essentially um, visualizing that number one, yes, we have an increase in the number of students identified with special education needs that require specially-designed instruction or that require an IEP. And two, we also have, um, a significant increase in our weighted case load measures. And I think it's important to represent those, those two increases, um, because a child, one child is not equal to the needs of another child. So, we do try to use that weighted caseload, it isn't perfect, it's not perfect, nothing will ever capture the needs of our special education students. Nothing will ever quantify it in a way that's perfect, but it's at least something to provide you that context and that, uh, and that visual. Um, so you can kind of see that in a bar graph and then a chart. And then, um, there's also a breakdown, uh, grade level breakdown, um, the number of students identified with special education by grade level there. Um, and that is something we like to keep an eye on because there are spike cohorts. Um, and we watch those cohorts of students as we're trying to assign caseloads, we do our best to predict, um, the rises and falls, the ups and flows by, uh, by grade level. Um, and then sometimes there are little surprises that come, um, middle of August, end of August, end of September, and then sometimes you just can't predict, um, some, some maybe unexpected needs that arise within your district. But this kind of gives you that, that visual representation. Um, and again, the, the main thing I just want to point out is just the, the, the needs are rising, then special education needs that require specially-designed instruction, those needs are rising in the school district. And then, the other thing that was important, um, to present to you was also the disability types. Um, and I, one of the biggest trends we're noticing really are two. Um, number one, we are seeing a significant increase in the number of students identified with, with an educational autism label. Um, and some of those students are coming into us at the early childhood level, and a number of those are. Um, and we're seeing some pretty significant needs with some of our earliest learners. And so that's something we're looking at, talking about in terms of service delivery and what that means for the educational experience of those children, and how they're going to serve both, that's, uh, both students that's within our school district. Um, and another disability area that I'd like to highlight there for you, um, is our speech and language impairment. And we have, because if you look on the previous page, you can see that weighted measure for speech and language looks really big, uh, but the students identified with a speech and language impairment looks like it's smaller. And that is, I just want to kind of identify somebody might look at that and say that doesn't make sense. Oftentimes, a speech and language pathologist will be on a school team, and if a student has a disability category such as significant developmental delay or educational autism, they will receive speech and language services, but that speech and language need is really a part of that primary identified disability. And we've been working really hard to make that, to kind of clarify that, that that's really a part of maybe that child, that autism disability, that's kind of one of the hallmarks of a child with autism is a communication difference, right? And it, it fits under that broad category, so they may not have a separate label. Like, the idea is not to pile on five disability labels onto a child, and so they're going to be considered by a speech and language pathologist under something called a related service. So, I just want to clarify that, I think that's important. And then, the last thing I wanted to point out here is evaluations. We did add during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, another school psychologist to serve our school district. And, um, I am grateful that, for that, because we have um, a significant number of special education evaluations that are happening in our district throughout the school year. Um, twenty-two, twenty-three was a really big evaluation year. We had a pretty big bubble, and I think part of that might have been because there was one school psychologist functioning prior to that and wasn't able to complete those, like, initial evaluations, and maybe even some of those referrals, um, were being held back because there may not have been the capacity to complete those evaluations. Um, we do have a second, uh, school psychologist, and I just want to, like, show you that work quantified, because it is a lot of work to do an initial special education evaluation for a child. Um, and it does require school psychologists, our speech and language pathologists, also case manage initial evaluations that the concerns are just regarding communication, but that does also pull our special education teachers. So they are required to be a part of that IEP team, they're also required to do some assessment, do some observation, make some recommendations, and I think that that work is important, that we quantify that work as well. One of the things we're going to try to be better at in terms of our data collection is indicating and collecting data on who is making those referrals. Uh, because we don't always collect that data, but I will tell you, um, from, from my vantage point, it, most of our special education referrals right now are from parents. So oftentimes, it's caregivers that, um, have received a medical diagnosis and are asking for an evaluation for their child. Um, I will say another difference or cause for this rise in evaluations, initial evaluations, is we have, we are using the special education evaluation process if a parent requests a five oh four plan for their child. And, um, it's really to make sure we're following an evaluation protocol, um, because you need to have that with a five oh four anyway, but also making sure we are providing a comprehensive, thorough evaluation, and making sure we're ruling out the need for special education before we consider that five oh four plan. Um, and that is, that was not done, uh, previous to the twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Um, sometimes a five oh four was not done through that comprehensive evaluation process. Um, and that's something, uh, it's time-consuming, but in my opinion, it's the right thing to do to make sure we're being thorough.
Is there data being tracked about how often those students do get identified as needing specialized instruction versus having appropriate supports and modifications through the program?
Yes, we have that data, although that might take a little bit of mind, but we've got that data, yeah. And we, we have had, and I did not include this in the special education update because I'm, I wanted to be very clear that a five oh four plan is very different than an IEP. Um, but I will tell you as an aside, we have had a significant rise in five, in students needing a five oh four plan in the Glendale River Hills School District.
That would be interesting to learn. That, at some point, that will like, like how, what impact that has on our staffing, it's, it's fun to.
Yeah. Yep, agree, agree, and it, you know, for us, it's, it's, it's not as much impact on staffing, but in terms of, we've talked a lot about staff development, and because now we really have to get good at providing differentiated instruction or learning to the edge, is what we like to say, because now we need to, right, accommodate for those learners, we're being held accountable for that, and so it really is pushing us to think about how, how can we just make sure that this is for everybody?
Yeah.
If I can just build on what Kelly is stating around, um, some of our work around planning to, that is just really starting to think about what are those common accommodations and analyzing that, so that we are being more thoughtful in our universal instruction to meet the needs of all students. So those are some looks that we've been taking this summer in that our student services team has been looking at and analyzing.
We can speak. As they are not worth for. Uh, sorry, I have another. Please.
Um, I know that the multi-tiered systems of supports was really largely started last year, and it was a growth opportunity, right? Did, is there any sense of if that had an impact this year on the number of referrals, are we, is there a data plan for capturing those kinds of things?
Um, I would say there's still a lot of growth for us to make, um, in our multi-tiered systems of support, I, I, we have seen a lot of growth. Um, in terms of capturing the impact of that, I mean, we could look at a reduction in the special education referrals as a positive measure of those of our multi-tiered systems of support, because our, we have a significant number of students identified with special education needs, so sometimes that does make you step back and say, should we be doing something different universally? And should we be doing something differently to our tiered supports? Is that something we've, we've talked through a lot? Um, so yes. Yes. I mean, I don't know that, that was a yes/no question, but, um, yes, we make growth, but yes, there's a lot of growth to be made still.
And a plan for data capture is being.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, I would think, and we haven't really, like, talked about that, but we would look at rate, percentage of, or number of special education referrals, but also student growth, this capturing the impact of our multi-tiered system. For, so. I also wanted to share, and this is something, um, I also wanted to share in terms of initial evaluations of the students that were evaluated. About fifty, almost sixty percent of those students qualified for special education services. About thirty-one per- percent of initial evaluations did not qualify for special education services. And there was a small percent of those students, um, that a referral may have been submitted, perhaps by a staff member, and the parent did not provide consent for that testing to be done. So, along the special education timeline, parents have a lot of power, and there's, um, a lot of breaking, a lot of points within their due process rights where a parent can halt that process, and so, um, there were, that, a ninety percent of parents halted that process. And that is their right. Um, six of those evaluations were on private school students. Um, I see. What year are you talking about? This year, twenty-three, twenty-four, okay. Yep. Six private school students were evaluated, and those are students that either live or not live. Those are students that either attend a private school within our district boundary, um, or they could live within our district boundaries and attend a private school outside the district through the specialty scholarship program. So, um, the private schools do, will pull, um, resources for us in those special education evaluations. There's two, there's, that friendly place, private schools.
Yes.
And then there's specialty scholarship private schools, and those evaluations are handled differently.
And can I ask, so the impact of that, we do get eval, so we're paying for the examination and the testing, they're taking hours of time for our staff to do the evals, and then we just push out a recommendation to that school, and then they take over? So that's sort of the end of that, we're just part of this evaluation process?
We do the evaluation, if a parent requests, and in general they do, we draft an IEP. So if they were to come here, this is what we would provide for you, if they live in our district, if they are a resident of our district. If they're a specialty scholarship program, they will need that paperwork. They will then create a plan with the family that may or may not look like the IEP we wrote. So they create a plan of service and then they are, they get monies from the state in order to serve students.
And is that pursuant to like a newer law? Is this, is this like, is this a regulation or statute that's been around or?
The specialty scholarship program is relatively new.
I mean, our, our obligation to evaluate.
Our obligation to evaluate has always been there. Okay, first, for any student who resides in our attendance area, okay. The, the changes that happened last year were if the schools within our attendance boundary, we would always do evaluations. But now they're having SNS students, okay, be evaluated by their, their resident district. And the reason for that is they're getting money from our school, our taxpayers for those students to attend private schools and receive a quasi player.
It would be interesting to know what kind of advocacy, like legislative advocacy we might run into around that. Now that, are you done before I let the board start asking questions? I want to make sure you.
I think I'm done. I did want, we did have some recommendations listed in here. This is kind of related to, I think, part of your question in the ride.
Carla also is on and has her hand raised, just so you know.
Oh, and Carla is here. So I'll, I'll just finish up then.
Yeah.
Okay. Given the increase in special education across this, the district, we would like to work to build capacity within all staff around designing to the edges. So that's something we talked about in order to meet the diversity of our students. We'd like to continue to strengthen our multi-tiered systems of support within the district with intention to universal instruction and tiered interventions. Due to the significant increase in the identified identification of students with autism, consider exploring professional development opportunities for staff aimed at providing some evidence-based interventions and well-designed programs to be continued. And then continue to explore evidence-based service delivery options for students with disabilities. So I'm Chris, I know I had some comments or questions and then Carla will come to you, but let's handle it.
You answered part of my question about the private school students or the students who are not residing in our district. Of those, of the, well, both looking at this year, you know, you said you had six students. I know you've had other students other years. Did, and obviously there's a, a cost in, you know, staff being pulled away from their jobs. Have we had to incur any additional costs because of that to bring in specialists or anything?
That's a really great question, Chris. Yeah, so we had an evaluation. Actually, two private school evaluations, the school year that required me to use a contracted agency to bring in an audiologist and a teacher of the deaf and hard of hearing because there were needs related to a hearing loss. So if as part of that evaluation, you need to consider like a low incidence disability area, you need to bring in a specialist, yes, we incur those costs and those are unpredicted costs. And I did not know those evaluations were coming, they landed on my plate. And honestly grateful that I was able to tap somebody to help us out. But yeah, there was definitely a cost to that. Thank you.
So sorry, I guess the other question, and I, you may not be able to answer this tonight, but services plans that the district has to fulfill and the cost of those. And maybe a brief explanation to people who might not know what services.
Okay, so a service plan is an agreement between our school district and a private school with, within our district boundary for a student who may qualify for services, but is not attending our school district. So through an agreement, we provide some services and those services are agreed upon when those private schools. So the services we provided last school year, the agreed upon, agreed upon service was speech and language services. So a speech pathologist travels to the private school and provides direct therapy for students in those private schools. That is done through equitable set aside funding. And you do that until the funding runs out. So we may blow through all of the money that was set aside for those private schools within the school year, or we may not. And so let's say there was a huge increase at one of the private schools within our resident district boundaries. Where if we keep a close eye on how much is being spent doing that, I would, could say, you know, in March, oop, we spent all that money providing those, those speech and language services. We will no longer provide those services to parents until the end of the school year. That did not happen last year. But just so you know, that's done through, through status, it's called equitable services set aside money.
Who keeps the close eye? You said if, sorry, if we keep, if we keep a close eye, is that you, is that, is it finance or?
Yeah, I think that would be.
Okay. So I'm sure you do.
We've been chatting about that.
Okay. Kelly, as a follow-up, and again, this might not be known right now, but what percentage of St. August State's campus would be considered Glendale versus?
My understanding is that all their actual school buildings will be within Glendale. So the, the school campus buildings will be Glendale. They'll have some athletic fields outside of Glendale.
Um, it will be a specialty scholarship program school. So that means for those evaluations, they would go to the student's district, resident district to complete the special education evaluation because they would be taking.
Fantastic.
Right, we would want to essentially be that key keeper for, for, for those private schools pulling money away from our taxpayers, right? Just as, let's say the student lived in McMon, they would have McMon to do that evaluation. But they could still ask us, I mean, we, yes. It could be a pull on our district for sure.
Carl, uh, do you want? Carla, you're up.
Okay, can you see me?
Yeah.
Hi. Um, I'm, I'm in North Carolina. So if I missed something and my question doesn't make sense, Kelly, feel free to tell me to call you later. But I, I was taking in what you said about private school evaluations. I actually was not aware that we do I E evaluations for non-resident students who attend private schools located in Glendale. I heard that right?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, and then that comes out of our district budget or do those private schools reimburse us?
No, that is part of our child sign obligation. We do not get reimbursed for that.
For non-resident students at Glendale Private Schools? Okay, that's, that's news to me. So when we have to bring in outside specialists to do those evaluations, we're, we're taking the hit in our budget with that.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. That's news to me. And then the set aside funding you mentioned?
Yeah.
For equitable services, does that, is that part of our budget or is that separate state funding?
That's part of our budget.
Wow.
Medical formula.
Okay. But when we, so when we, we look at our sped budget, our allocated budget for the school year, that's included in that, that total?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that you, I don't know how you would see that represented within our budget, but it's really based on the number of students in the private school that's within our, our district boundaries identified with an I E. Or identified with an educational disability requiring services. So it has to do with our per, our per pupil amount and the number of students in their school. There's a math calculation.
And we just, a point of clarification.
I'm clearly not a mathematician.
Is that also part of the specialty scholarship programs or are those non-special needs scholarship program schools?
Those are non-special needs scholarship schools. I, they cannot double dip and get a service plan on top of SNSD.
Wow, I, I gotta say, I'm just processing this because it's news to me. So we're reimbursed at what, thirty-something percent by the state? I'm just being annoyed now. We're reimbursed at thirty-one percent or something by the state to provide I E evaluation services to students who are non-residents who go to private schools in Glendale. And then if that school actually provides special ed services, they get reimbursed at like eighty, ninety percent, right? It's just crazy. All right, thank, thank you for the clarification from North Carolina.
Absolutely. Great questions. I have just a few, and I don't know that you'll have the answers or not, but just, uh, can I look at the numbers of identified students, V I Ps and disabilities? I wonder how we compare the other districts or other schools around the state, like, are we, is this pretty, are we like? We are high. Okay, okay. And to like, when you look at this, are you looking, like, do we have any concerns around like over identification? And I, and I'm tying that to this, you mentioned, we have a lot of referrals coming from parents and caregivers. I'm not sure who else would be like, other, the teachers or staff, who else would be making referrals?
Um, we, we obviously get referrals from first to three agencies. So those come in, we get referrals, anybody can make a referral. So we have gotten referrals from doctors offices, referrals from parents, referrals from teachers. Anybody can make a referral, okay, regarding a child that they suspect may have an educational disability.
Okay, and you're saying like about sixty percent of those tend to qualify, thirty don't. So it just gets me thinking around like our family caregiver community education on the front end. Like where could we do some education? Like you guys put out that amazing presentation of, of several last year, right? So I'm just, so it gets my head spinning thinking about how we could do some community engagement on that. And then thinking about like gene, I, I just, just like, I was thinking about a lot of overlap. So all those disabilities, I was like, well, there's probably overlap with some of that identification, right? Like I have a child who would be in several categories of those, right? So I don't know, just kind of thinking about that. It's just, it's interesting. I appreciate the presentation. Yeah, just wondering what we could do around community engagement on this topic and advocacy, and legislate, you know, legislate level four funding, et cetera.
I do think, you know, this thinking about our, our multi-tiered systems of supports and boosting that and Act twenty is also going to really help push us in that direction. But there's a lot we can do before we move to a special education referral. Or if a child, let's say, goes through the evaluation and doesn't qualify, it's okay because we have support within the district that can serve that child. And they may have a need that doesn't require specially designed instruction.
Yeah.
And a child may also have a medical disability or a medical diagnosis that doesn't exactly equal needing a five oh four plan as well. So there's, there's a lot of nuances. I don't ever want to tell a parent. It would be not legal for me to tell a parent, you cannot put in this referral. Because again, it's part of our child sign obligation. That's part of what we need to do is find the children that may need special education needs. But looking at the number of evaluations we have gone through, it's significant. And I, and our, our special education population is high compared to other districts, for sure.
Yeah. Just in, in reference to the number, the fact that our numbers are high, we have a reputation of having a phenomenal special ed program.
Yes.
We had a parent last year who was moving from out of state and interviewed a number of different districts. Specifically moved to us because of our program. So I think that might be part of the reason our numbers are higher is because our reputation is so basic to us.
Yeah, that makes sense. All right, thanks for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Okay, thank you. We are moving on to item three E, business office update. Anna and Michelle Brown, maybe for name?
Yes, your debut. Hello, nice to meet you. I would first like to start by introducing Michelle Brown. Our, our new director of business operations here in the Glendale River Hills School District. She started with us July one and has, a couple days before that, two as well, or weeks. And has really hit the ground running and has done some really phenomenal work. You're going to, in the first part of our executive summary, learn a little bit about our timeline and processes around the operational referendum for the month of August. And then I will hand things over as Michelle was talking about our monthly acceptance for approval. So some of the things that I wanted to lay out for the board is we know due to our current financial situation as it's a reason that we would need to consider a referendum in the fall election. So from July first, up until this point, Michelle has been working diligently at building a twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five preliminary budget. And we have been consulting with our financial advisors at Baird as well as our league of council around next steps in this process. On seven twenty-four, we will be, for tonight, we'll be providing with this preliminary budget. And the board will take a vote, whether or not they want to move forward with the proposed preliminary budget. Pending that approval, what we would be doing is taking that information back to our representatives at Baird and Michelle will be working closely with them at updating some of our financial forecasting and working with legal counsel to draft the referendum. As well, the referendum resolution and what that language might look like for the upcoming fall election. The goal would be to update the school board on that possible referendum resolution and provide more clarity around our financial forecasting on our next board meeting scheduled for August seventh. And then continuing that work of education on August fourteenth with a potential work session or to have the opportunity to have more clarity around our financial situation. In, on eight twenty-one, we would be looking at bringing that referendum resolution to the board for possible approval so that it could make its way to the ballot in fall. And between eight twenty-two and eight twenty-seven, we would need to make sure by eight twenty-seven that we had notified and filed the resolution to D P I and electoral authorities to make the deadline in order to get it onto the ballot and have over seventy, seventy days in progress. So that's sort of the timeline of walking through this process. So there are some, you know, heavy responsibilities that lie with both myself and Michelle to work through those processes and provide the board with as much clarity as we can with the information that is available to us along with the support that we're getting from Baird as well. So any questions regarding timeline?
Oh, is it? I would echo whoever had said they were really glad to have a clear timeline and really crystallizes things for us and helps us to understand. Because in my head, I had, I had a sense of like early August, we need to be doing this and by this stuff, but this is excellent. Thank you. Thank you. At the time, I will turn things over to Michelle Brown so she can make her name.
Thank you very much. As far as the vendor check history, we have to hear a packet that is showing our expenditures that went out in the month of June. One thing that these are in checked number, number of order of checks. And then in the fourth column, you'll see the account number. I don't know if that was on reports in the past, but one thing here is showing you where those, those items were expensed. So that as we move forward further in the year and give you a monthly, you know, breakdown of where we are compared to the budget. That's six. Um, that six-digit number in there is the function, and that's how that budget will look as well. So you see the different funds. And then one quick thing I want to tell you about that is when you see an H there as but an E is an expense and an L is a liability and the majority of those are coming from payroll. You know, someone's deductions or the district's um benefits, and those were already expensed to another spot, so now they're liable. So on the very last page, you'll see um balance sheet. Those were those Ls, the liabilities. Um, the total of balance sheet, um, payments for forty nine thousand seven twenty eight eighty four. And then expenses, five hundred thirteen thousand three thirty six ninety eight, or a total of five hundred sixty three thousand sixty five dollars and seventy nine cents. So report again, hopefully you have any questions.
So just to make sure I understand, if E equals expense, that means that that's a check that was cut. But L equals liability, it means we already paid, but it's still represented here?
My. It might have been inside. It was a deduction or amount of it, most of the time in payroll.
Okay.
So then that created that expense we had to pay. Money was taken out either, you know, from someone's check to pay that, or it's a benefit and that's expensed during payroll. One thing you'll notice in July is when they're not on here, but you'll see it next month. Uh, expenses that were from the last school year, those would be, we will do a journal entry to expense them in June. And then you'll there'll be a liability that the district owes in August, July, that were made July. Obviously, I see some of those. So I can let you know what that.
For move on, should we? The check register. Second. Okay, there's a motion to approve the check register. Should I say the dates? June, oh. Is there any, sorry, any questions for the audience, any? Yes, oh, yes, thank you.
Do I need to get my address scanned or?
No, I think we've got it up.
I believe I know, but just for clarification, you explained the E for expense, L for liability, and for something A is asset?
Yes.
Then. Are there any numbers listed on or any amounts listed that for whatever reason might not be in the sum total for checks?
They should all be there. I ran this report to include the totals. It's not multiple reports combined.
Yeah.
If you would answer one of your questions, no, those were not listed out before in prior monthly expense reports. There hadn't been monthly expense reports given out the past few years. So thank you for doing this. We'll pull off on a lot of the other questions for now. Then may I ask some questions about the previous item for the special education?
Oh, I'm so sorry if I didn't ask for discussion.
Later?
Yes, could we maybe in the? Yeah, can we? We'll close this out and then we'll come back to that. I apologize. Yes, I need you to keep me on my toes. Been listening a while. Come on. Um, okay, all right. So thank you for the question. Thanks for the reminder about the discussion earlier. Uh, there is a motion to approve the June twenty twenty four check register. All in favor of approval, voice code I.
I.
I. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes to approve the check register. Okay, we're gonna, we are going to double back. Okay. When you have asked, thank you.
So for the special education evaluations, would you all be able to say push that over to neglect since they do have the same and more boundaries?
No.
So so the district that um the child would be attending at the point of the referral would be the district that would be legally obligated to part to do the read. Thanks. So we're K eight, any student from three, two and a half really up through eighth grade would come to us. They could only be responsible for the high school referrals.
Then. Is there something you all are trying to do to say graduate a child from an IEP, say with the speech impediment?
Sure, absolutely. So um, the special education process, first of all, requires you to look every three years and reconsider whether or not a continue, a student continues to have an educational disability that requires specially designed instruction. So that's really built into the process. You do that every three years. Also, at any time, you can have a reevaluation to consider dismissal from special education services. So that recommendation will often come from the service providers. Um, there may be a student receiving, like you said, speech and language services, and the speech language pathologist says, you know what? The student has met all of their IEP goals. They're functioning so well in the classroom. I no longer believe this child is a child with a disability. Then they would ask to, or they would talk with the parent and hold a reevaluation to consider dismissal from that special education program. So yes, we're always looking for that opportunity.
And encouraging students to work towards that or just if it happens, it happens?
I would never frame special education for a first student like, I want you out of this. But every special educator, when they're working with a child, wants to make sure that they're focusing on a goal. So the child knows what they're working on. And it's also important that they know why they're working on that. In in general, right? Students want to work toward those goals, especially if we make those goals relevant to their life. Um, so children are always working in a way that's goal oriented. Yes, encouraging students to meet those goals.
Last question that I have for now in the policy itself, the policy twenty four sixty, towards the bottom, it says the district identifies, locates, and evaluates all children with disabilities regardless of severe severity of the disability, et cetera. And then in the presentation, it sounded like it was only if someone recommended them for evaluation that they get evaluated. And I was wondering, are all students evaluated or only if recommendation? What's to say stop some student from slipping through the crack if they're just a quiet kid?
Yeah, so we um, we have what are called child find obligations. So we try really hard to cast a wide net. And we work to find children within our resident boundaries that may have a disability. And part of what we do are send out, we send out mailings to and we kind of um establish certain points. So newborn families, students that are three, students that are four, get a mailer that shares with families or caregivers um some important developmental milestones that their their child should be reaching. Um, and then also giving them opportunities to participate in a screening or um an opportunity to fill out a screener online or to tell families how they can put in a referral for special education if they have concerns and think that their child or um, or a child they work with may have a disability.
I know I said that's gonna be my last question, but apologies, one more. So what's? Say, an unfortunate situation happens and there's a parent that does not particularly engage in their child's educational development and just doesn't care to have it filled out. Is there anything in place to say help that unfortunate situation?
Yeah, so um, sometimes parents don't know and I, right? And um, sometimes parents don't know what what developmental milestone should be met when and where and why. And that's why we're really proud to have a K four program here. Uh, because sometimes children do land in K four and maybe they're not talking or maybe their speech and language is not as developed as it should be for their age. And at that point, our teachers are pretty with it in terms of what's developmentally appropriate. Um, and will at that point put in a referral um because they have significant concerns. Um, and then part of our educational process is really working with children, doing what we can um to meet their needs. And if we see there's a really big academic lag, then that's, that classroom teacher may then work with a team of people um to kind of play around with interventions. They want to see how a student responds to intervention. And if they're working with the child and they're not seeing growth, they're not seeing progress, then that may um push them to put in that referral for special education services.
Okay, now move on to item three F. The preliminary.
There was.
Oh, can I? I'm so sorry. Can I take you back?
Yeah, please.
I'll try to leave it to.
Michelle Sorsie, sixty five twenty. Okay, Michelle Sorsie, sixty five twenty five North Range Line Road, Glenville, Wisconsin, five G two zero nine. Um, going back to your report, just curious, how many private schools are here in Glendale? I know there's St. John's. Who's the other one?
North Shore Montessori in St. Francis Children's Center.
Yeah, that North Shore Montessori station, they didn't, yeah, okay. And please don't take this wrong at all. I'm just curious on the graph, because I didn't pull it up at all. I've just been crazy at work. How many students are Glendale students? Glendale residents versus non-Glendale residents? I'm just curious in that receiving services.
At the private schools.
Private school or even like within here?
Oh, you mean like open and?
Open enrollment, yeah.
Oh.
Do you have a breakdown? I'm just curious. Are we receiving the same amount of service? Money for that or across the border, isn't the same amount of money we receive funding? Let me put in funding for Glendale residents and open enrollment students.
Are you talking about the reimbursement for special ed?
Yeah.
So it's mission open enrollment versus a residence, you receiving spent services. Is the reimbursement the same?
It's not the same.
It's not.
Okay, so if you want the numbers, I can look up what we got last year for regular versus special. Yeah, I'm I'm just kind of curious on that.
Yeah, it's not the same.
It's not the same.
No.
Unfortunately, okay. And the other thing I want to do is to give the special education and um staff who do the evaluation a pat on the back. We work very closely with them over at Glendale Heights. We even call and say, you're going to get a child who's going to be turning three in October. We have concerns. We got documentation. We've done ASQs on them. They are behind. You guys come on out. You work with us, whether it's one day a week with a child or they get on the little baby bus and they bring them on over to Parkway. But you guys have been excellent working with us or us with you. And I just want to say, early intervention, the sooner we can get them. And some of these kids, we've worked with parents in the one-year-old room, and they're just like, oh, no, there's nothing. My child just isn't speaking yet, but it's okay. And by the time they get to that two and a half year old, getting ready for threes, they really realize that next we get in contact with you guys and you guys really work very strongly with us and help us work together as a great team, I feel, by working with our teachers, saying, no, try this activity and be doing that. So I just think that early intervention, you're talking about what can we do? The earlier we get them, the stronger the child's going to end up being. I really think so.
Thank you for that. Cam, I can tell you.
So for um a non-special ed student who's open enrolled, our district gets reimbursed for last school year. This changes on a yearly basis. Last year, we were reimbursed eight thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars per student. Our special, our students who receive special ed services, um, we were reimbursed thirteen thousand four hundred and seventy dollars a student. And just FYI on your comment, St. John's is in the city of Glendale, but is in the Mapledale, Indian Mill school district in terms of special ed services.
Also the.
We've got a couple of streets on the northern edge of Glendale that actually are serviced by Mapledale Indian.
Okay, so they're.
Thank you. Um, okay, apologies again. And uh, thank you for your comments and being engaged, both of you as well. Um, we are going to move on to item three F, the preliminary budget. So I will let Michelle take it.
Start by saying, uh, board policy six six two two zero require requires budget preparation and presentation for adoption by the school board. The budget is a reflection of the district's operational and educational plan designed to efficiently carry out its goals, maintain its buildings and applications. So we're gonna go over the twenty four, twenty five preliminary budget. Um, this is in the required um format by the state for publication. Starts with our unaudited twenty two, twenty three. Um, and I guess I should back up. The general fund is what is presented first. That is our bond ten. We are showing our unaudited twenty two, twenty three in the second column and then unaudited twenty three, twenty four. And then the proposed uh budget for twenty four, twenty five. Uh, the bond balances are um what was in our system currently. Um, our audit is not complete yet for twenty two, twenty three, so this is subject to change slightly. Start by saying, we'll just go over to the twenty four, twenty five. Um, starting the year, projected to start the year with a um negative bond balance of one point six million. And then having revenues of twenty two million one hundred thirty four thousand three seventy eight. And then expenditures of eighteen million eight hundred ninety eight thousand eight hundred. Um, a large portion of the revenues there are here, property taxes, and then um also a six million dollar state trust fund is part of that. And the revenues are broken up into uh local sources. Um, that's where our property taxes are and student fees, other things like that, field trip fees. Um, inter-district payments between other districts, um, open enrollment is here. Intermediate sources, that could be uh funds from CISA. It'd be a program that they're, you know, grant fund flowing through them. Um, state sources, that's our pupil aid and library aid, transportation aid. Federal sources, those are our title grants. If you look in um the third column, you'll see a larger amount and that's the spending of the remaining asset funds in the twenty three, twenty four year. And then all of their sources, we're looking at, that's where the wealth is, six million eight thousand one thirty two. And then in our expenditures, uh, instruction. It um projected to be seven point eight billion support services. These are uh, these would be all our school support services, counselors, um social workers, transportation, business, all of those functions are in that um support services. And then non-program transactions, that's where our expense for open enrollment out is, and then our transfers to other funds. Those are the majority of things there.
You say transfer to other funds, is that the transferring to specialized?
Yes, yes.
Are there any other? Are those the?
Are there any other, are those the two open enrollment and twenty seven, maybe some other?
Said, that's the majority of it, um possibly um. Share a teacher with um Nicolet, okay. And other districts, those teachers would be there too. But then moving on to the special projects funds, the majority of this is fund twenty seven. Um special education fund. We also have a fund twenty one. Um had a minimal amount of activity under a hundred thousand in this year. And that's where that fund balance is coming from, is the fund twenty one. And that started um beginning balance of thirty one thousand thirty five dollars and. Projected to end that amount, uh revenues and other financing sources um. Four million two hundred and fifty four thousand seven twenty five and then expenditures of the same amount. Moving on to the debt service fund, um. This is our, these are our fund thirty eight, um in but thirty nine debt. Um you'll see that uh beginning fund balance forty four thousand six eighty five for the current, for the twenty four twenty five year. Ending fund balance of forty four thousand nine forty. Revenues and other financing sources. Um has increased from last year to four hundred and seventy. Two thousand nine twenty seven, and that's to levy for the um first. For the current debt that we had, and then the state trust fund debt is added in there to the first payment that will be due in March of twenty twenty five. And then expenditures, some other financing sources that payment is been added in there with the other payments we had too. Were four hundred and seventy two thousand six seventy two. Any questions so far? Uh what is the number for the debt service fund? It's one thirty eight, one thirty nine, there's two months. Uh capital projects fund, the district started funding a fund forty six that can use for capital projects. And um put two hundred and four thousand seven ninety in there. And the only additional revenue we're looking at this year is possibly interest. That can't be spent yet. I'll need to look at what year and what year. And moving on to food service, um. Food service fund, um had a beginning, will have a beginning fund balance of zero. Um and an ending fund balance of zero, we're expecting that that would have um. An equal amount of revenues and expenditures. That is the goal for that fund. Otherwise, it does require a transfer from fund ten to make up. So um the twenty three twenty four year, it did start with a fund balance of a hundred and five thousand nine twenty eight. Um expected to end with a fund balance of zero. And that's still unaudited, so.
Could you speak to the twenty two twenty three years then? That the goal should have been for that year to end at zero?
No, you can have a fund balance and after COVID, during COVID, meals were um. Free, and then there were higher um reimbursements rate. Reimbursement rates as well from the federal government on meals, so a lot of districts build up a fund balance. Okay, yeah, yeah. But it can't be negative, so if it's negative, we have to, yes.
Can I just ask, Michelle, I feel like this was one of the funds that last year we were told we needed to spend down based on what the state had asked us to do. I might be misremembering. It was my first year and I was confused. Um, because this is confusing stuff. I remember that too. Okay, um is it, what is the typical recommendation to carry some kind of fund balance or to zero out?
I think you would want to carry some type of fund balance, probably not a high one, you know? We're not looking to make money off, you know, those student meals, but you would want something if you had to replace your equipment in there. So, I mean, not real large and the state, I remember those even sometimes as well. And then the community service fund, um. Last year, there was a large levy in that fund um before. We'll just start with the twenty three twenty four year. It started with a beginning fund balance of six hundred and three thousand seventy five dollars. And uh it's ending with a projected fund balance of one point nine million. Um revenues and other financing sources, uh one million seven hundred fifty two thousand eight twenty six. And then current expenditures showing at three hundred eighty six thousand four fifteen. Um the twenty four twenty five preliminary budget is. Lowering those revenues and other financing sources to five hundred seventy one thousand. And then um expenditures of seven hundred and fifty thousand. There was a plan, we're looking into what were those expenditures supposed to be that were coming out of there? So.
There was a plan for the seven fifty. Sorry, saying?
Well, the seven fifty is if something needs to be replaced. I just wanted to make sure that we budgeted enough for that. And then um drop the levy amount for that fund to five hundred fifty one thousand. Kind of bringing it back in line with previous years, and then the other revenue is anticipated interest rates. Start getting those funds invested there, but keeping a balance for. Items that would need to be repaired in our community, um. Facilities for community and then also increasing um moving some of our programs that are open to the community. To fund eighty, to the community service fund, and that's fund eighty. Um on the third page, we're looking at um the gross total expenditures for all funds.
Wait, sorry, could you hear?
I I don't, I just.
To the package, show you cooperate.
Yeah. I tried to delete that. Package to cooperative program would be if we were working with another district. With a co-op program, maybe where somebody's running that. And then they build the other districts. We do have some of those programs, but we're not running those through. Uh that's what that okay, co-op would be, have to co-op. And those are funds in the nineties. We don't have that right now. Okay, that's why I wouldn't. So um gross total expenditures for all funds is twenty four million eight hundred eighty three thousand seven forty two. The inter-fund transfers, um. Two million seven hundred forty four thousand three hundred for a net total expenditures for all funds of twenty two million one. Hundred thirty nine thousand four forty two. And then the very last section is showing the proposed property tax levy. Um for the general fund of thirteen million eighty one thousand seven eighty one. Uh non-referendum debt service fund, that's fund thirty eight, of four hundred and seventy thousand nine sixty eight. And then the community service fund of five hundred fifty one thousand fifty five dollars. For a total school levy of fourteen million hundred and three thousand eight hundred four. Which is a five point two percent decrease from the levy twenty three twenty four. Um looking at property values, if there was no increase in property values and we were looking at this levy. On last year's property values, it would be a bill rate of five dollars seventy six cents. Last year's was six dollars seven cents.
Well, that walk through is probably one of the. Comprehensive, intelligent walkers I've had in a very long time, so. So thank you. Uh I have just, I guess I'm trying to, so now I'm looking at. The general fund and looking at total revenues, that's twenty two million hundred thirty four, et cetera. And then I come to all funds and I see total expenditures twenty two million one hundred thirty nine, et cetera. Uh but I don't see revenues there. Am I to like, am I to look at this revenue number as a general fund? Like from saying, here's our total revenue for the year, here's our total expenditure. I'm not quite sure if I'm missing something or whatever, missing, but um.
Yeah, and I'll have to look at the calculation of this again. It's it's a formula, it's supposed to be pulling. What it should be told, pulling is the total expenditures for all funds.
Okay.
Not the revenues, but the expenditures.
Yes.
And then it's going to subtract the transfers.
Okay.
And then that net expenditure is the twenty two million one thirty nine. So, yeah.
And then where, so just like at high level, all of our revenue. Is, oh, I guess, so there's the revenue from the general or from total revenues and other financing sources. Is there other revenue? See the capital project, so if we would end. I guess twenty two one three nine minus twenty two or or. Our revenue is less than our total expenditures. I guess I'm trying to formulate the question, so I don't see how.
Yeah.
We're ending the positive.
Okay, I see what you're saying, you know, I'll add this, so.
Oh, okay, 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 thank you.
You're welcome. And part of it too is. Okay, okay.
I just ask a clarification. Uh Michelle, do you feel like this needs to be looked at again? Is this something that we should? Put a pin in on the next meeting or?
No, I might, I don't think so. I think it's just, it's not talking revenues, it's talking about expenditures.
Right.
You know what I mean? And so you're looking at all the expenses and part of the expense in fund ten. Is a transfer to fund twenty seven of over two million dollars. So that eighteen thousand, you're eighteen million, you're looking at, but ten, you're going to reduce that. Expenditure and then you're going to look at the four billion in fund twenty seven. That's where they're getting at to get the twenty, you know, the twenty two million. I don't think there's a mistake.
Right, no, I don't, I'm just, it's my gap in understanding. I was what, I'm I'm.
Yeah.
Positive, that's what it is, but I don't. Because what I'm, what I'm getting at is the ending fund balance takes into account, this general fund ending fund balance, does that take into account? All of our total revenues and all of our total expenditures?
No, no, it only goes running through the general fund.
The general fund. Yes. Is there a way for me to understand? How all of the funds, I guess not, because some of them transfer.
Maybe August fourteenth.
So. Yeah, my, so my, when I. No, my ask, I guess my ask would be that I love to walking through this and I would think this would be a good. Uh budgeting workshop to like really be able to dive deep into just having a better understanding of it.
So we could definitely do that.
Yeah, because I'm like, I'm getting it, I'm getting it.
Right, right, and I don't mind you holding the. That discussion.
Yeah.
That's what you meant, I thought you meant to be hold off on, you know.
I have a question.
Hi, Carla.
Can I ask a question? It's it's more just making sure I get it, because I, Michelle, I've been trying to understand this for two years now. Um so I just want to make sure I get it right or that you can straighten me up if I don't. The inter-fund transfer. When you look at the total expenditures on the last page where it says all funds. And there's a inter-fund transfer of two point seven million, the. My understanding, and then you correct me or give me the thumbs up, is that that's primarily a transfer. That that primarily involves the unreimbursed special ed expenses, right?
That's correct. It's special education expenses that the other revenues mainly in fund twenty seven are IDEA. Federal funds and then a state reimbursement, categorical reimbursement, and then um. Maybe a hundred thousand of Medicaid revenues coming in to reimburse the district for services to students who would, you know, those.
Got it. So when I, when I see that difference between four point two million. Under special projects fund and the two point seven million. Transfer, that's that difference, right? Okay, and then the reason you subtract it from both sides is so it doesn't get double counted, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay, yeah, I think I got it. Okay, awesome, awesome. Thank you so much for the clarity in working through this worksheet.
Okay. Don't want to forget to ask for visitor questions or discussions, I'm just saying it out loud right now. But prior to that, is there any further board discussion or anything else you'd like to add, Michelle?
I did add those up and the expenditures in each bond do match.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Alright. Oh, you do, okay, thanks.
I'm sorry, this might be getting a little bit too much in the weeds, but um. Gus had said that, said that we overcounted student membership. Um and suggested that there could be some adjustment to state aid and I wonder if that has been anticipated in this budget. Or we maybe just don't know enough to do that yet.
We did see a reduction in some of our final payments of aid in June.
Okay.
There were a couple of them that were reduced to that, yes.
No, already take care, we don't have to anticipate for the next budget.
That's correct.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome. And we've also adjusted our, you know, membership numbers down as well.
That sparked a question for me, I remember from the food service fund. Uh sometime last year, we had discussion around like. How we either package or deliver food or maybe some other districts and we're supposed to receive payments from them. Uh and make, what?
We were doing it at a loss.
We were doing it at a loss, correct. Is that, is that something you guys are looking at and thinking about or able to make changes to? Okay.
Yeah, that is the reason I I see that as a big reason why we have a zero fund balance.
Yeah.
Um and yes, we are looking at that and.
Oh, okay.
Talking about the revenues need to match with our expenditures of our. And for the, if we're serving meals to private schools, we need to be billing them and recording that cost.
Thank you, okay. I'm gonna do it after the motion. Wait, no, okay, fine, let's just do it now. Correct. I mean, yes, wait, come on, come on.
I don't sign, I've been called worse. For the six million dollar loan or. That debt, are we allowed to exceed the regular levy limit because of that debt or is that something that comes out of the general?
That comes out of the revenue limit that could be used in fund ten. Or not allowed to levy it.
What is the interest percentage we're, as a district, getting on the money sitting on in our bank accounts currently roughly?
I need to look it down, it's been, it was very minimal last year. It's going to increase, we're going to be looking at those investments. What we can put away for how long?
I know there's, believe some banks that are still paying several percentage points. It looks like the district might have been getting like. Tenth of a percent or something prior, so every little bit. Then for the food service fund, just my opinion on it, you should aim to have at least a little bit of a balance in there that way. This is something that you can say charge the other districts for ideally and potentially charge students here and have some sort of balance in there. That doesn't have to come from the general fund to hopefully alleviate at least a little pressure there. And then last one, is there any expenses we're currently not running through the community service fund that we could be?
Um we are, we were not running athletics or activities through. Um, we are, we were not running athletics or activities through there. And, uh, we also need to look at possibly billing of, uh, our. We are looking at billing of. The rentals of our buildings and billing of the cost of that, recouping that.
Then, I know, so that's my last question, but sorry, one more. For the Community Service Fund, is that something you're allowed to have an additional levy for above and beyond the regular?
Yes, that is, that is outside the residence.
Yeah, is it, me for now.
Thank you.
Carol Quersland Heights, twenty-three fifteen West Good Hope Road, I have a question about what you were saying with the rentals of the building.
Yeah, you and me. Yeah, we're speaking about the rentals of Glen Hills and Parkway to be utilized by community members and ensuring that our, um. That we are having market value based on our board policy to have market value about that, not necessarily the rentals of Good Hope.
Okay.
Right, we have very, we have very little rentals happening at Good Hope, and outside of that, our tenants who are there, but like rental of the facility for public use. Is what she's referring to.
And, um, are, are, uh, because we're, our rent, because we don't have leases in place, are we going to be addressing that soon, or?
Great question, uh, is that right? Um. Yeah, could you clarify or speak on that?
The, um, Glen Hill Heights, it's not had a lease for, um, probably. I, I don't know, maybe six months to a year, Jan, just was wondering if that was going to be addressed. We're still paying around.
Yes, that will be, yes.
Any idea what?
I think we can do follow-up video, yeah, after the meeting, is that okay?
Okay.
Sure, love you, yeah, thank you.
Carla.
Okay, thank you for that, now, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary budget, if someone else hasn't already.
Second. Okay, there's a motion in a second, approve the preliminary twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, I'm gonna do a roll call vote, Chris Robinson. Hi, Katie Avalo, hi, Karen Crumwell. Hi, Danielle Bailey votes aye, Carla Pennington Cross.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you both, Ms. Young, Ms. Brown, for the work on this. You know, it's ongoing, and everybody, everyone, everyone's, all, all hands on deck, so thank you. Uh, alright, move it on. Title nine policy, second reading. We have recommended action to approve the revised Title Nine policy, it's reflected in the attached document for approval. Anybody like to make a motion?
I motion to approve the second reading of policy, the Title Nine policy.
Second. Okay, so a motion to approve the second reading, any discussion from the board? Any discussion from the audience?
I would just shout out, I would shout out Chris, whose notes on his policy have caused Niola to reconsider their language.
Yeah. So, you have a third, a future, a third career.
Can, can I add something to?
Yeah.
Since we're doing shout-outs, I'm over here trying not to talk too much, but I, I also want to give a shout-out to Anna specifically for being very, very open to all our. All our questions, we had a lot, and I really appreciate your willingness to lean in with an open mind and answer our concerns.
Second.
Thank you.
Um, any discussion questions from the audience? Okay, uh, so a motion in a second, all in favor of approving the second reading, uh, second reading of Title Nine Policy. Two-two-six-four, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, second reading is approved. We'll now move on to item four A, board member reports, there is a Swissa agreement and resolution. Yes. Okay.
Um, this is a resolution from the Southeastern Wisconsin School Alliance, um, the resolution reads, be it resolved that the school district of South Milwaukee retained Hubbard, Wilson, and then Zelenikov. For the period of July one through July thirtieth as legislative council on a cooperative basis with other school districts that are members, which we are. The Southwestern School, uh, Wisconsin School Alliance regarding matters of mutual interest as determined by the alliance. Including but not limited to constitutional limitations on legislative decisions related to funding for education or research, public awareness and information sharing. Yet further resolve that the district share the fees for these services plus reasonable and necessary expenses. With other school districts that are members of Southeastern Wisconsin School Alliance on the basis of. Um, and this would be our dues, because we do participate in this at the currently, which would be three thousand two hundred annual fee. Um, for districts participating, so both Katie Avalos is board representative on there, and I'm superintendent administrative representative on, on this alliance, so this would be to. Continue our membership with them.
I move to approve the Swissa membership.
Second. Okay, there's a motion to approve the Swissa membership, uh, any discussion from the board?
A point of clarification, would this be an organization that would then be advocating for things such as how funds are allocated by the state?
Yeah, so just, just a little bit of background in my, my brief, my brief one meeting tenure, with a lot of discussion on terms of looking at, um. Prioritizing legislative needs of the district and how we go about loving that and having a common message around what is best. For our students and how we honor the choice of our parents in terms of funding of our public schools.
Yeah, they, they talk about, last year, they talked a lot about Act Twenty and that legislation and advocacy and how that was going to impact, um, all the schools. So. I, yeah, I mean. I, I think this is covered, I mean, I, you know, I, I guess I sometimes question like, it's thirty-two hundred, I mean, I, I do think that there we have got some. We get good information from them, but.
Because I, I've only attended two meetings, she's only attended one, and you did last year, um, we don't have a lot of. Truly good information on what's going on with this group, so Anna and I had a discussion at the side of the meeting, participate this year. And then to discuss it at the end of the year, like if we want to continue with this next year, because.
Yeah.
We're really clear on what some of the groups were in, in due and how they benefit us directly with this one, we're less sure.
And this has been raised before, I think specifically with some, with some of the, with some of our sort of. With this group, I think in particular, because I do think it is important that we do legislative advocacy and that we know what's coming down the pipeline, so I think. There is value, but I guess it's just, I would like to kind of understand.
Yeah, and my impression honestly, so far from my first two meetings, is it's not the most organized group, they're not the best at sticking to their agendas thing, and they so. Like, um. And, yeah, I think we give it a year, it feels like they're also under new leadership potentially, is the vibe I'm getting, so they may also be experiencing.
Okay.
So we're gonna give them a year and we'll discuss this again next year.
Okay, alright, perfect. Um, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the Swissa membership, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Hearing them opposed, uh, we, we are approving our membership. And now. We are looking to move into closed session, so we would like to read that motion.
Motion to recess, I'm doing closed session through sections nineteen point eight five one C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Specifically review of personnel changes.
I didn't take, I didn't take a breath.
You didn't, oh, okay, I thought.
For perpetuate.
Oh. So again. There is a motion and a second to, uh, move into recess, the closed session pursuant to section nineteen eighty-five one C. Uh, I'll, I'm gonna do a roll call vote, Chris Robinson, I'm Katie Avalos, I'm Karen Crumwell, I, Carla Pennington Cross.
Aye.
Danielle Bailey votes aye, we will now move into closed session, um, closed session.
I move to approve, um, action as discussing closed session.
What could specify, can we?
Yeah.
The hiring of Taylor Dassau as our library media specialist. Second. Okay, all in favor of hiring Taylor Dassau as our libra, oh, sorry, any discussion and comments? Okay, thank you, alright, all in favor of hiring Taylor Dassau as our library media specialist, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we are excited to welcome Taylor as our library media specialist, it's a, I could always get to know you in that way. But we are sad to lose you.
Yes.
And your administrative capacity, because you are the goat of, um, the conference. Okay, we're gonna just take care of some business, there's a meeting closing, review of to-do items. Uh, coming down the pipeline still will be employee handbook revisions, uh, Good Hope info packet in buildings. Grounds update and planning.
Um, did I get clarification on employee handbook revision?
Yes, yes.
So in doing some research in the, uh, more docs on prior meetings, it looks as though January eleventh, the, um, handbook was approved. With the revisions made by legal counsel. Um, so that was, it was a motion that carried in the January eleventh meeting. Um, and so in, in review of that, um, I did speak to legal counsel and their revisions to that came in after January eleven, so.
So, okay, so that would be a typo missed in the minutes, or typo in the minutes, because the approval was to approve the handbook with the caveat. That legal would review it.
Okay.
And then we would bring back to the board any of legal's suggestions or revisions.
Okay.
Which in fact did happen, was presented to, it was, at least legal reviewed, submitted their revisions to Allison. Her former superintendent, uh, she shared those with the board at that time, but we had technical difficulties like accessing the redline version, so.
Okay.
This board, this board has not seen the, uh, legal suggested revisions.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep, so I guess, uh, in terms of proceeding, um. Based on, based on what I found, um, my initial thinking was that we would forward the revisions as we have to have a handbook in place, as we welcome our employees back into our district. Um, what I would like to do then at this time is to come bring that forward on our August seventh meeting.
Yeah.
And can share those revisions with you in a format that everyone can access, so that you could see the redline revisions, and then we'll make the approvals so that those revisions can then be cleaned, so that you can be shared with staff.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't recall anything like being major substantive, I want to say it's probably mostly grammatical. Uh, language to align the whole book, I know it's dangerous and stuff, so I don't think, so, okay. So that'll be August seventh, and then, um, Good Hope info packet, buildings and grounds update, when is that? I mean, kind of looking at.
Right, so, um, looking at the, um, update around Good Hope, um, would be, I would be slated in my conversations with my CACR to, um, work with him to prepare a packet on sort of the information and the assessments that were done there, as well as getting some information from our internal folks who've been custodian, head custodians here. Um, I can provide an update of summer work and the Good Hope packet at the same time, if you would like, um, I would slate that to happen either at that August twenty-first meeting or our first meeting in September. Um, I would like to see what the August twenty-first meeting is in terms of, I'm hoping we can do some of our preliminary work on the referendum, but I do think one of those two meetings would be where we would want to bring that information forward.
Okay, uh, and the last item is strategic plan and district scorecard update, uh, that's coming.
It is, okay, we have some really big work to do in the month of August, and I would like to also slate those last, that last meeting in August. Um, potentially looking at what our agenda looks like on the seventh, maybe to do some of that free work around the scorecard as well, so, um, we will, we will have some of that work ready, I know the team has discussed a potential scorecard, so I wanted to kind of, um. Make sure that board has eyes on that and opportunity to weigh in and provide feedback around that, so we can think about what a scorecard would look like for a district.
Alright, uh, I'm gonna move on to future agenda topics, does anybody have anything they want to put on the radars?
Um, this is way future, uh, as we spoke about special education and reimbursement issues, um, and advocacy, I thought that this board might, along with our, our. Our team, um, might present a resolution for consideration at the education conference in January.
Are you interested in working on some language?
I am, indeed.
Love it, um, and that was actually on Carla's, uh, to-do as well, in terms of building an advocacy plan around the spent funding issues for the state budget cycle, so I'm sure. Um. Let's put that on our radar, I mean, I could see even one of our working sessions down the line being around advocacy. Spent funding or something like that, diving into that. Uh, and so that was one of her other topics, scheduling working sessions on issues that came up at retreat. And I, we could follow up with her more on that, but I think. Yeah, I think there's, it sounds like we all are in agreement, so those, those won't be issues, we'll get those. Okay, and moving on to item sixty, board meeting debrief. Um, I did not select a, a norm or an intention at the beginning of the meeting because we were late. And I was, um, but I just think that I want to thank everybody for our efficiency and collaboration, working together, everybody keeping me on my toes over here, uh, and our audience for being engaged, um. Yeah, feels, it feels weird to have it feel so. But, you know, anyway, I shouldn't say that, but whatever, it's true, it feels, it feels really good right now, and I think I'm so appreciative, so. Got a good team, anybody else have thoughts about our meeting?
I think I just wanted, um, really just. Learn how to use technology, um, but also, I mean, truly deep appreciation to the staff who answer our questions regardless of the time that we send them. Who go to great lengths to make sure that we get detailed information and. An additional insight and context, um, that we didn't even know to ask for, it's, that kind of communication is incredible, and we appreciate it. Having Michelle on board has already clearly been a tremendous asset, and I just want to give her a shout-out, she was. Very informative on June tenth, on July tenth when we met, and then tonight too, like, everything has just been really great, so. And just deep appreciation for everything you guys are doing, because it makes it much easier to feel like as a board we're able to speak informed decisions and, um. I was saying earlier, there was, I, one of the biggest fears I had over the course of the early months of this was. What the impact would be on our district leadership. And I'm so proud and impressed that you're all still here, it's huge.
Thank you, Karen, that made me a lot, and I feel very fortunate to have an amazing team and look forward to welcoming, um, Liam Williams onto our team as well, um, coming August first, and so. It's just continuing to build our capacity, and I also would just like to give a shout-out to, um. Michelle, the business department, that's gone on, has been helping us out, Tracy Grex has been helping us out as well as Diane Furtmore, who's my NARC consultant. Who is, um, just about backed out an audit in about, um. Month, which is insane, and so, um, very, very heavy lifting, why not?
Yeah.
I want to say that I came here expecting this to be a very long meeting based on the agenda, and I'm incredibly impressed that we got this in just over two hours. That then really speaks to how chilled this whole team is, and how much work that goes on behind the scenes. You guys kind of anticipated a lot of our questions, which also, you know, that means you've been paying attention to that soon.
Thank you, Chris.
Just what everyone said, yeah, I, I really appreciate all the information on the service, and, um, thanks for making me feel like, no question, it's a silly question, so thank you.
Okay. Moving on, seven a.
I motion to adjourn, that's it, got it.
Second. Alright, all in favor? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you and good night.